Be approved as presented.
I will make that motion. Thank you.
Motion made by Matt. Matt, second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. Any other discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then it's recommended that the minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by George, second?
I will second George's motion.
Second by Matt. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. There are no statements from the public, so we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I've asked Lisa Bridgewater to come up this evening and give us a small presentation on her request to provide a service dog at the schools. So Lisa, I'll just turn over here.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. So I am presenting a proposal that I would like the board to hear about initiating a therapy dog program at South Spencer. So I'm going to go through each of these sections. I'm going to introduce myself and introduce my dog, give a brief overview of what her training is, discuss what a therapy dog is versus an emotional support animal or a service animal, the benefits of having a therapy dog on campus, my proposal for a program, and outline what my responsibilities are as Emmy's handler and what the responsibilities of the corporation are. So this is my fifth year with the Exceptional Children's Co-op. I have been assigned to South Spencer for the last five years. I've also been with Chrisney Elementary for the last three. So my reason in doing this is really to expand my role. You know, as a school psychologist, a lot of my role is participating in special education evaluations and annual review conferences, and that will always be a core component of my job. But I feel that I want to broaden my role. You know, I am trained in counseling. I am trained in academic interventions. I've had experience at residential treatment facilities where I co- where I wed individual therapy and group therapy, and I've also participated in risk assessment where students have expressed that they want to harm themselves or others and other maybe taboo conversations like that that I feel comfortable navigating. So I think the introduction of an animal could be a nice segue to that. So this is my dog Emmy. She is approximately one and a half years old. We don't really know what her breed is because she is a rescue. We believe she is a golden retriever mixed with a terrier or a schnauzer. She has earned titles of canine good citizen and urban canine good citizen through the American Kennel Club, and she has also been registered with Therapy Dog International since February. And since being certified in February, we have been to multiple nursing home and rehab facilities doing group visits. So I'm not going to go through each item, but the purpose of the canine good citizen is just to have a dog that is friendly and well-mannered in the community. So it's being able to walk on a leash calmly and not pulling me all over the place. It's being able to leave items when told, being able to come when called. And if there was an instance where we had to be separated, so I hand her over to Melissa and I step out of the room, we're not going to have a total come apart. Reaction to distractions. So if another dog approaches us, we would be able to conduct ourselves mannerly and sitting instead of jumping on people for pets. The urban test is more for community, being able to navigate ourselves with the community. But the things I wanted to point out, being able to accidentally enter doorways without pulling, being able to walk across the street calmly, ignoring food on the sidewalk, and again, being able to allow people to come up and pet while having objects in their hands. The Therapy Dog International test is about, Therapy Dog International is a volunteer organization, so we are not paid for our work. A dog must be a minimum of a year old and have some temperament, and we also must evaluate their behavior around people with some type of service equipment such as wheelchairs, crutches, et cetera. And many of the test items are repeats, but I do want to mention the start items. The first, getting around people. So Emmy needed to have people touch her from all directions. So if we're walking through a crowd of kids, one might be touching her head, one might be touching her butt, one might be trying to, you know, get kisses. You know, she's able to react appropriately to that. In the middle, part of our test was being able to accept pets from a person using a wheelchair or a walker or a cane. And since we have been going to the nursing facilities, we are used to being around people with oxygen tanks and large pieces of equipment. So I know that there are students specifically at Rockport who have large wheelchairs and large pieces of equipment that we are comfortable navigating around safely for the student and for the dog. On the right side, leave it, part one. So I had food and water bowls in the, in my, my line of travel, and we had to walk by and say, leave it. And I think that's really important in schools because you never know what you can find on those floors. So being able to resist those distractions. And then the final one on this page, reaction to children. We had to demonstrate a basic calm yet excited temperament of being around children, being able to sit and go in a down position when instructed to do so. And I invite you all to ask questions as they come up, or you can save them till, till the end. So we use the terms very interchangeably, and I want to emphasize that Emmy is a therapy animal. So our main job is to provide support for others. She receives obedience training. We've gone through a lot of training, but we don't serve a medical purpose like a service animal would. Those kinds of dogs are designed to, you know, enhance someone's life, you know, detect seizures, detect blood sugar levels. Emmy doesn't have that type of medical training. Service animals also have public access rights at all times, and they are not permitted to be pet while working. Emmy has public access rights when granted, so that's what I'm coming to you for. And cutting and handling are encouraged. She is not an emotional support animal, so that would be more for myself if I felt that I needed emotional support in order to do my job and live my daily life. Again, that's not what Emmy is. So some of the research for the benefits of therapy dogs, there is a bunch out there. Academically, students improve their attitudes and increase motivation while reading. Their overall reading skills increase in terms of words permitted and comprehending what they're reading, and they don't feel as stressed out when being asked to read. Behaviorally, they feel more connected to school. They demonstrate more impulse control and emotional understanding and improve school attendance. Kids want to come to school in order to see the dog. And it encourages more group work and collaboration opportunities between students. You know, students are going to want to gravitate to work in a group with a dog as opposed to working maybe by themselves on academic tasks. So I found this chart that I, that I think is very interesting. So on the right side, you know, the, the introduction of a dog isn't going to work for everybody. It's just like a medical intervention. Medication isn't going to work for, for everybody. And so, so there's going to be some students who dislike or fear the dog, and we may not see an increase of reading with those students. That is always a possibility. But on the left side, you will see that there are a number of reasons supporting how introducing a dog could improve reading. So on the far left, if a student's mood is elevated, they're going to have a positive reaction coming into a reading situation. They're happy to read. They want to read to the dog. And so what that might lead to is an increased confidence with reading, motivation to want to read, and then we see those improved skills. And then in the middle part, you'll see if our arousal is increased, again, we're going to be more confident. We're going to be more excited. We want to engage with that book and that dog. But for some other students, our arousal might decrease. We might be really, really high anxiety. We don't want to read. We don't want to engage. But if that stress is taken down a notch, we can get to a place where we're able to respond to that academic material that might be a little hard for us. So just some general guidelines. Emmy will remain on a leash at all times, except if I'm asked to do a short demonstration. I anticipate she will be on a leash all the time. I am the only person permitted to be Emmy's handler. That is a Therapy Dog International regulation. Not even my husband is permitted to be her handler because I'm the one that took the obedience tests with her. If Emmy is to enter a classroom, it will be announced to avoid allergy or fear issues. Certain areas of the building will be off limits, including the cafeteria and the staff lounge and other areas with food. You know, Emmy is trained to be able to resist those distractions. But I'm, I just don't want dog hair crossing with food and any potential allergies. And I would also need to get with Coach Britton and Mr. Packer about the gym floors. We do groom, groom her and cut her nails regularly, but I don't want to damage the gym floors with her nails. And finally, Emmy cannot be given food or treats from students because we don't want her to ingest something that she is not supposed to. So my proposal is Therapy Dog Tuesday. I've talked to Jamie Denham and Rick Hunt. We think Tuesday is a good day of the week because there's a lot of times we have two-hour early dismissals on Fridays or three-day weekends on Mondays. And so we want Emmy to be as consistent as possible. If there's a special occasion like a school event or an emergency, like I talked about, a student is in crisis, I could come up to two days per week. The reason I am only proposing Rockport Elementary this time is because Mr. Schneider and I want to use this as a trial year, see where we want this program to go. And then looking ahead to next year, if we want to introduce more campuses, we would be able to do that. So in the morning, we are going to be doing more academic-based activities, pushing into classrooms at the direction of the teacher. I would lead stations or I would work directly with students receiving intervention services, assist Jamie Denham in her Title I setting, kind of whatever academics they would want me to focus on. And then in the afternoons, it'll be more behavior-based. So counseling students one-on-one or in small groups, those students who teachers have identified might need a little extra support because of anxious feelings or just any other behavior of concern, intervene in instances of crisis, and then helping with coming to school and dismissal. Some other ideas, kind of looking ahead in the program, are just overall building morale suggestions, visiting classrooms during morning meeting, attending special events, which I would likely do as needed, giving certain students jobs to do with Emmy such as brushing her, cleaning her water bowl, and being a calming presence during those testing windows. And as needed, suggestions of processing grief in the community and stress management for staff because this has been a crazy year for not just the students but teachers, administrators, and school staff as well. So my responsibilities as Emmy's handler are I would purchase all supplies and materials, including leashes, bowls, cages, you know, towels to wipe her feet if it's snowy or rainy, any kind of material she would need in the school building. Regular care. We professionally get Emmy groomed every six to eight weeks. We also will have her regularly bathed and have her up to date on all vaccinations and just have her look clean and well-kept. Therapy Dog International offers us insurance, but because I'm at work and it's a volunteer organization, it can get kind of dicey. So my husband and I have upped our homeowner's policy to $1 million in coverage, and I will also maintain my Therapy Dog International licensure. And then transportation. I will have reliable transportation to get Emmy to and from school each day. So Mr. Schneider sent me the four board policy items that need to be considered when thinking about bringing a animal into the building. The first is being able to approve health records, which I have submitted to him. Take precautions to protect the health and safety of students and other staff. Again, I will keep her on a leash. I will keep her out of designated areas, and I will keep a cage in the room at Rockport should I need to leave the room temporarily. Again, keeping up on the regular grooming and keeping our co-op room clean and as free of dog hair as possible. You know, Emmy is a, is not a non-hypoallergenic animal. She does shed, so we will do our best to maintain that by using dander wipes, but there will be dirt and there will be dog hair. So we, so after she leaves, I'll either vacuum the room myself or get with Heather or Shelley to help me with that. So we're going to do the best we can. So the responsibilities of a school corporation would be to sign memorandums of understanding, which I have copies of here. We already have one on file for Rockport Elementary from last year, but should I ever need to go to loose or the middle school or the high school, I would need these on file for her to enter, which is why Melissa, she is not here today. Parents need to be told that there's going to be a non-hypoallergenic animal in their building at all times. Should, you know, I be on the news or a news crew come to Rockport Elementary, I need to identify that I'm a member of Therapy Dog International, and that is their rule. It is not mine. So I would need to identify myself, and we'd have to get prior permission prior to doing so. And then I would need to gain approval from the school board, and then I would need to get permission from teachers for Emmy to be in their classrooms because ultimately that is their classroom, and they have the right to tell me that we are not permitted to enter. So I welcome questions. I welcome concerns or any discussion points.
So as a doctor in your field, and you have a lot of experience in education, I'm sure, any success stories from other schools that you could share?
So I'm relatively new in the therapy dog world. I do know that Mount Vernon Junior/Senior High School has a therapy dog that comes regularly. I've tried to get in touch with that principal. I haven't been able to reach them. But some of the things that I've liked is their corporation has paid for other staff members to be handlers of that dog. So let's say I need to step out or I have a meeting or something. Somebody else would be able to step into that role and handle the dog appropriately. And they have also purchased corporation-wide insurance for themselves. I think my homeowner's of 1 million would suffice right now, but could be something if we ever want to expand the program.
Is your exposure between Emmy and the student on a one-on-one or in a group activity? And how do we ensure that it's not more of a distraction than the gain of
Right.
service?
So I think, I think it would depend on what the teacher envisioned. Sometimes it might be one-on-one, especially if I'm doing some kind of counseling. Sometimes it might be a small group. In terms of being able to kind of read the room and see if it's a distraction, you know, I think I can kind of pick up on those signs that students might be off task. So if we're in a group, you know, unfortunately, I would have to redirect, and if the students don't respond to those prompts, I would have to send them back to class or filter them through another academic station.
How about caseload? Using what you've, you've been in this position for four years prior without Emmy. How does Emmy affect your caseload and the services that you're providing?
So my, my schedule would definitely be an adjustment. With special education evaluations, I have 50 school days to complete those evaluations. And so that means I'm working on many different timelines, and so I think that this program is manageable. If we were to expand, then we, then me and Mr. Schneider would need to talk about how my role could shift. Maybe just have me in South Spencer instead of going to Chrisney. I wouldn't be proposing it if I didn't think I could do it. I've never missed an evaluation timeline, and I do not intend to ever miss an evaluation timeline.
So this is extra. This is on top of?
This is on top of my regular job duties. And I would like to emphasize that I am not getting paid extra for this. This is something I'm really passionate about, and I think that our students could really benefit from it.
According to the policy that we're looking at and will be discussed later this evening, this is approved through the principal. Mr. Hunt is the one that you've met with, and he's already signed off on meeting that pol- meeting that school policy?
He signed a memorandum of understanding last year. We had a therapy dog come for Read Across America. So we have discussed this plan proposal, and so he has agreed to it. He has not signed anything to say that he agrees, but I feel confident that he would still stand behind our, this plan.
A recommendation from him, I think, is what the policy requires, or from a principal specifically.
I understand.
Yeah. So what, you get into, I don't want to be the only one asking questions here. The history of success in regards to this type of specific program. What age group? Are you looking at all of the elementary? Are you looking at special needs? Are you looking for people with, you know, learning issues? What's the, what's your focus?
So my focus is Rockport Elementary for this year. As far as students, it could be any student, pre-K to five. So those with special needs, those without, those with learning difficulties, those without. You know, who the teachers, I think, nominate as needing the most academic and behavioral support. And so those students can be special ed, or those students can be a general ed student.
It's going to be more like on a selective basis?
Yes.
On a daily selective basis?
Yes. But we'll try to hit everybody through things like the character trait assembly, greeting kids when they get to school. Those kinds of things where we'll be more open access, if that makes sense.
Yeah. In regards to, how do you handle the permission with parents? You mentioned it up there, that the parents would be notified, but if we get someone that says, I don't want a dog in the building because my child is allergic or has a fear of dogs, as obviously there, how do you work around that in terms of, I'm thinking, how do you get into the building without causing a distraction in the mornings and how you?
Yeah.
I don't, also don't want Emmy to get hurt when you have mass exit or end of school day, things of that nature as well.
So I do think, you know, being able to mass communicate falls on the responsibility of the corporation, so Mr. Hunt or Mr. Schneider. I guess I would have to consult with Amy Walls in terms of what kind of allergy is it? Is it the type of allergy where we just don't enter that student's classroom? Or is it the type of allergy where we can't be in the building at all? So I think if a parent expressed that, I would need to default to Amy Walls.
Right. Mostly Dr. Andrews, like Benadryl or something like that. But we have to be prepared for those type of things as well.
Absolutely.
You, you mentioned homeowner's insurance. I would suggest that the corporation and you verify through council that that's where the policy needs to rest and make sure there's nothing that is outside of that in regards to, I don't want something to happen in your homeowner's aid uncover you, and then follow back to obviously the deeper pockets of a corporation and the community and taxpayer.
I would be more than happy to engage in that conversation.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Do we have anything else?
That is all I have this evening.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent items. Number one, approve the payroll claim document and the accounts payable claims numbered to eight fifty-four to nine seventy-seven. Number two, approve the treasurer's financial report. Number three, accept the resignations of the following, approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. So the first one is Lisa Will, South Spencer Middle School Teachers' Aid effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Kara Matthews, High School and Middle School Activities Director, effective September fifth, twenty twenty-two. Lindsay New, Rockport Elementary Multimedia Specialist, effective September ninth, twenty twenty-two. Monica Daming, South Spencer High School Athletic and Attendance Secretary, effective September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Sarah Bogus, Loose Elementary Health Aid, effective September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Kristi McCabe, Title I Teacher at St. Bernard, effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a correction? I have to apologize, but on Lindsay New, on C., you said Lisa New instead of Lindsay New.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lindsay New, Rockport Elementary Multimedia Specialist. Thank you. And then we have approve the FMLA for the following. Michelle Wright, continuous FMLA from seven seventeen, twenty twenty-two to nine eight, twenty twenty-two. Sydney Seaton, continuous FMLA from nine six, twenty twenty-two to eleven one, twenty twenty-two. Tracy Spearhorn, intermittent FMLA from eight one, twenty twenty-two to seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And Sarah Campbell, continuous FMLA from seven eleven, twenty-two to nine eleven, twenty twenty-two. Okay, so can I get a motion to accept these consent items?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second.
I'll second.
Chris will second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have the consideration of administrative recommendations. Mr. Schneider, number one.
Thank you. In your board package, you'll find a copy of Board Policy three-two-two-zero-point-zero-one, Teacher Appreciation Grants for Your Review. There are no revisions or changes to the policy. House Enrolled Act ten oh-one requires boards to approve said policy annually to qualify for tag funds. This evening, I recommend the board approve policy, Board Policy thirty-two twenty-point-o-one, Teacher Appreciation Grants as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll second.
George will motion. Second by Melissa. Any discussion?
That's an annual.
Annual. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number two.
In your board packet, you'll find a proposal to increase the salaries of hourly non-certified staff by 50 cents effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. We're also proposing all salaried non-certified year-round staff be increased by $1,000 and all salaried non-certified school-year staff be increased by $750 effective January one, twenty twenty-three. This is the proposal we shared with the full board at our August twenty-ninth work session. Our budget can't afford the raise, and it is fair, a fair proposal as our certified staff did receive a raise earlier this year under the second year of last year's contract settlement. I recommend the board approve the salary increases as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chris. Second?
Second.
Second by Melissa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number three.
Thank you. In your board package, you'll find a proposal to increase the pay of all bus drivers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. The proposal will increase the daily rate from $73 a day to $80 a day, increase the special education routes from $99 a day to $106 a day, increase the substitute driver rate from $77 a day to $85 a day, increase the tech route from $118 a day to $125 a day, and increase the ECA field trip rate from $15 an hour to $18 an hour. This proposal was shared with the board at our August twenty-ninth work session and was requested by Transportation Director Shelley Meredith to compensate our drivers if we have, as we have, consolidated routes this school year. That means more students are on the buses, and the routes are, are longer. There's more miles driven, driven. This evening, I recommend the board approve the pay increases for our bus drivers as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion by George, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Melissa. Any discussion?
Yeah, on that one, in regards to length of routes, can we evaluate routes to make sure that we aren't overextending, A, our drivers nor the students? There have been some parental concerns with students being on the bus to four o'clock or a little bit after from the loose Richland Hatfield area that were voiced of concerns. I support, I don't know, I mean, I agree with it. It's just a matter of, I think we need to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is there.
And I will check on that again, Matt. I know at the start of the school year, Shelley said it, added fifteen minutes, but I know routes changed.
Right.
You have to make adjustments if a kid's added, stops added, so it's possible those times are extended. I will check with her and get that information back to all.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number four.
In your board packets, you'll find a proposal to establish three classes in the maintenance department. Proposal is to create a Class A, Class B, and Class C position in the maintenance department, effective September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Position descriptions are included in your packet with essential duties and responsibilities outlined for each class. Class A, the highest skill level position with most responsibility, will be compensated at an annual salary of sixty thousand dollars for approximately twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents per hour. Class B position will be compensated at forty-one thousand six hundred dollars a year or roughly twenty dollars per hour. And the Class C position will be compensated at thirty-five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, which is equivalent to seventeen dollars per hour. The system is designed to be flexible for future considerations as well as provide the corporation with an opportunity to attract and retain strong candidates. I recommend the board approve the maintenance classification proposal as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Melissa will motion. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion?
The only discussion I have is our maintenance, are we, are they on a hiree contract or a salary contract and what we plan to do with overtime if it occurs?
Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, our, the only salaried maintenance worker we have is Class A?
We've got Class A and Class B, so they are all salaried. What they do right now in the situation, if they come in and do spraying on the weekend or something like that, they try to get that time back when possible. They don't always get it back, but they are salaried positions.
When does that contract for that type of person normally begin at bringing people into this current contract? How does that relate? Do you prorate the contract for this year to get them on the cycle with equal people in equal type contracts?
Yes, yeah. So I mean, you could hire someone in nine months through the year and pay them the full salary.
Right.
They're prorated to.
And that's understood within, okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion will carry five oh. And then we have number five.
Our school's psychologist, Lisa Bridgewater, who presented earlier this evening, is requesting the board approve her request to have her dog Emmy at Rockport Elementary School. Ms. Bridgewater meets all the guidelines of policy, eighty-three ninety, animals on school property. I recommend the board approve her request as presented.
Reaffirm, right, on that document?
Yeah, I mean, we're really not doing anything.
Right, with that in mind.
Policy, yeah, I, I didn't catch that. I think.
No, that's good.
You changed my wording a little bit. Yeah, so we're really not doing anything with the policy. This, this is strictly to approve her proposal that she presented here tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so a motion by Chris. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Melissa. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number six.
All right. In your board package, you'll find your requests from South Spencer High School Principal, Mr. Jim Bush, to join the Indiana Association of School Principals for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Membership will be paid by the interest income account at the high school. I recommend the board approve his request as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
George will motion. A second?
I'll second George's motion there.
Second by Matt. Any discussion?
Yeah, we do this for every principal. Why are they all not done at the same time and just in one bulk?
They're busy. They're busy folks, so they just, when they send them in, I put them on the agenda.
Not to put you on the spot, but I guess they come in at different times based on when you signed up or your affiliation with them?
This is the first year I've done this this way. Previously, we just paid it out of a different account.
Okay.
I support it.
There we go.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number seven.
During our August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two work session, we discussed the board being given an opportunity to vote on the idea of proceeding with gathering additional information on developing the property just west of the high school or deciding to halt that exploration. Tonight, the board can vote aye to continue exploring the option or nay to end the study at this time. I want to be perfectly clear to the public so that they understand, and aye vote tonight only means the board will continue to research and consider the options to develop the twenty-seven acres. It does not, and I repeat, it does not mean the board is voting to develop this property. So with that said, the board gets your will.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move that we continue to explore as quickly as possible.
Motion made by Matt. A second?
A second.
Second by George. Discussion?
There's a lot of, I mean, you're talking about eighteen to twenty homes that would put children in our classrooms in the center of our school district. And every month that we punt, we drag out by over a year, homes that are drastically needed, as Mr. Schneider can attest to, looking for a house to move or relocate. To South Spencer, as soon as they become open, they're usually off the market before they even get listed. So from my perspective is we need to move quickly. I mean, we need to.
Well, and I'll say, I've been back and forth on this for months. You know, there are times where I think it's good, but then after looking at that letter of intent, I just still have lots and lots of questions. I, I think, I think it's a rush kind of thing now because of that grant, but I don't want to rush. And I think we need to, as a board, I would like to see us talk more about other ways that we can improve our numbers and look at other ways for, to increase our enrollment besides just go and build houses when I still think there are a lot of questions that need to be answered.
So I would agree with you with the exception that you are, you're talking about piece of property that's basically landlocked, that's heavily wooded, that has multiple, multiple family dwellings on the outsides of it that run liability and a risk for a corporation that we also need on our plate from that perspective. We have a grant that was proposed by, that was proposed by a commissioner in regards to the Ready Grant that will take care of the roads and sidewalks and some of the infrastructure that you will never get that type of thing offered again unless they repropose another grant similar. And that's just a hypothetical hope. Selling the property outright from, besides that, we would be just selling the property to the highest bidder, and if they wanted to do nothing with it, they would do nothing with it. The property has zero value other than a liability and a risk to this corporation, and that's my stance. I say that because when I was a child, I played in that woods, so I know what's in there.
Is there any other discussion?
Miss Heather, I won't put you on the spot.
You can. I only came for the support of whatever this board chooses, so.
Ready Grant, are we too late on it?
No, we're not too late.
Have you been given an update on what funding is available at this time? Because I know at the last meeting that we had, it was like a multimillion dollar grant, and it has diminished quite a bit, quite, you know, rather fast.
Well, actually, our district or our region, which is Indiana First, was allotted fifteen million through five counties. I'm not exactly sure the number, but five counties get the right to choose whatever it is that they bring to the table first. So when this result rolled out last May, they, these dream topics were just listed as things that could be utilized in this grant. And so since I was given the opportunity to present, I did go ahead and ask them to roll this project forward to be with the letter of intent for the funding of the infrastructure. So it's been presented. I'm not for sure if it was approved by the, by county board that they have, but I know that it has been on the list since last May.
Do you know when it closes?
And I pushed it forward, I'm sorry.
Do you know when it closes? Do you know when that process closes?
I know that when the fifteen million is gone.
Okay.
We're out. And I know that once you are approved, then you have a timeframe, which I can give you more information on that if, you know, that's something that's causing, you know, the questions. And I totally understand what you're saying, Janet, but it's, it's a process, but, you know, what should we do? What is the best decision? I know Matt mentioned that there's twenty-some homes, but if you read through the letter of intent, it's just eighty-one homes on the twenty-seven acres. And with the Ready Grant, it must be complete by twenty-twenty-six. So I, I also think with the funding that the school corporation could receive from this development, not only through the students, but the funding that you're taking and achieving the return on investments, think of the marketing tools that you could have by upgrading so many things. For example, the, the complex with the batting cage and all of that facility. You know, with these dollars, instead of making it a facility that was for yesterday, maybe it could be for a facility, and I'm a dreamer, but, you know, at ten to twenty years from now. And, and think of that as a marketing tool.
Those property taxes, the benefit.
Right.
So I, I do agree with what you're saying in regards to, we need to always be looking at marketing tools to draw students to this school. You know, me being from the north, I don't just credit myself in that area. I'm here for the whole county. So, and I'm willing to help and share anyway. But again, I'm only here for support today on whatever the decision is that your board chooses to make.
Are we gonna have another round of Ready?
I'm not gonna rely on any rounds.
No.
I've been saying, there's another round.
I was.
The other thing, the other piece of it is, if nothing else, move forward, the school corporation should consider moving forward with surveying the property, us coming up with or the corporation providing us what their thoughts are. Mr. Bush is in here tonight, some type of a buffer between the high school property and said home so that your noise pollution and visual pollution on a Friday night during the fall, when there's football games, is taken into consideration for whoever's going to build in there. But to drag this out since last May, all the way, you know, we're over almost a year and a half now. And I know that we, let's, you know, make rational decisions, but we just can't sit on our hands and let the opportunity of funding that we would, may never get again, that would pay for great homes on probably the highest point in Rio. And I know that the eighty-one homes was listed in that Ready Grant, but realistically, when you think twenty acres and you think the number of homes that are gonna bring the, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a real estate person. We had a couple of those come in there. They indicated that if you want to bring the right type of homes, the right type of family dwellings with multi-bedrooms, multi-baths, you want property that's going to fit that also. So I'm kind of rationally thinking that is the reason why I threw out that and nothing more.
I was gonna say something, but I lost. Oh, I know what I want to say, and then I will be quiet. But, you know, as a marketing tool, something that we, I think, forget is the level of crime that we have here, which is minimal. And, and thinking of the number of workers that travel from Kentucky or maybe travel from Warren County into this area, you know, those folks have lots of crime, and, and those are things that we should be able to market why we want students to come to our schools and, and the, the amazing programs, just like this young lady did a while ago. I mean, we have lots of things that we can market on. So I do agree with you saying that we have other options, but it would be amazing if we had more students to provide those to.
Just look at the surrounding corporations' sports programs and the number of children that on a Friday night here are playing both ways, or the number of students that we don't have on the sidelines that we could draw in with the right type of homes to a corporation that is, I would consider us to be a rural family type of environment.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna vote aye. And the only reason I'm voting aye, I'm not sold on this yet. But I'm voting aye because it's a continuation to talk. That's the only, I'm not sold on it at all yet, but I'm still willing to talk about it.
Well, that's what this is. It's, it's to move ahead, not to sell it, but just to keep it, keep it going instead of just slot it under the table.
Fair enough.
You agree?
Okay, so we have three ayes.
Yep.
Anybody opposed? So I'm gonna vote no.
No.
Motion still carries three to two to continue exploring the options. And then we have number eight.
All right. In your board package, you'll find a request from choir teacher, Mr. Kyle Vincent, to have the choir travel to Cincinnati to sing the national anthem at a Reds game. I feel this will be a great experience for the students, will be a great representation of our school and community. I recommend the board approve his request as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'm not approving it because it's on a Wednesday at eleven o'clock. I can't go.
Neither can I, George. I don't get a chaperone either, so.
I'll make a motion.
Who they playing?
I don't know.
I'll second Chris with the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chris, second by Matt. Now, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion will carry five oh. And then number nine?
Thank you. In your board package, you'll find a list of school volunteers for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. I recommend the board approve the list as presented.
And can I get a motion?
A motion.
George will motion. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Melissa. Any discussion there?
I have a relative on the list, so I'm just gonna abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So motion carries four oh with Matt abstaining. And then we have number ten.
Yes.
The transfer.
The transfer, right. This evening, I'd like to recommend the board approve the resolution to transfer the balance of the fund nineteen forty to the education fund as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Chris, a second?
I'll second.
George will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have consideration of personnel recommendations. Then number one.
Number one.
Mr. Schneider.
Recommendation to approve the hire of Kristy. The recommendation to approve the hire of Kristy McCabe, Title I teacher at St. Bernard for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Melissa will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Chris will second, any discussion?
So what was the timeline on, on this one? This year's school year? Because this was a recent hire, right?
Yes.
Very recent hire, and earlier this evening you accepted her resignation from the position. Yeah, so it's been since our last board meeting.
Put the school year there or the dates? Or does that make, make a difference? Since we're approving her hire after her resignation on the agenda, should we not just put the dates from?
We discussed this weekend, and this is just to give a paper trail for state board accounts if they're ever, if we're ever audited on, we got documentation with the board, did approve her hire and accepted her resignation.
You could probably do that all at once. You sort of ratify the hiring, but then note that the resignation's already been accepted as well, for the purposes of the minutes. Be a little cleaner.
I think that would be best.
So do we need to reword the, the first?
So it's a motion, so someone can just say, I move to ratify? You don't even have to modify, I just, I move to ratify the hiring decision, noting that we've already accepted the resignation and then clarified that way.
What she said.
There you go. So moved, that's how you do that.
There you go.
Is it still Melissa and Chris then?
Okay, so is it, I was gonna say, is it still, you still okay with that?
Yes.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number two?
I'll make mine clear.
Yeah.
Recommendation to hire Madison Williams as a multimedia specialist at Rockport Elementary School, effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Melissa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Recommendation to, yes, sorry. Recommendation to approve the hire of Spencer.
Kirkus.
Kirkus. Thank you. Teacher's aide at South Spencer Middle School, effective August the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
First will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Melissa will second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And number four?
Approve the hire of Sheri. Thank you. South Spencer High School prom sponsor, effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second Melissa's motion.
Matt will second, any discussion?
I don't envy that position.
All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number five?
Approve to hire Kalen Higgins, Rockport Elementary School, special education teacher, effective September sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Chris will motion, a second?
I will second Chris's motion to hire Kalen Higgins.
So second by Matt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And number six?
Approve the recommendation to hire Darren Ewing, South Spencer School Corporation bus mechanic, effective August the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Chris will second, any discussion?
Didn't we just do this?
Not Darren.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number seven?
Approve the hire of Jenna Higdon, South Spencer School Corporation's speech language pathologist, effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Chris will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Melissa will second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number eight?
Approve to hire Adam Shoemaker, South Spencer School Corporation skilled maintenance position, pending his clearing of background check, which I think happened today. And that is effective September the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Melissa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number nine?
Classification, since you had those A, B, C, B, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then number nine, ECAs.
Recommend to hire the following ECA appointments. Reagan Lashley, sixth grade girls' basketball coach. Barb Brettz, high school, middle school activities director. Kara Matthews, varsity JV swim coach. Caleb Gravemeyer, varsity high school, varsity JV assistant swim coach. Brittany Lambert, varsity JV dive coach. And John Wells, middle school swim coach.
Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Melissa will motion, a second?
I'll second.
First will second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number ten?
Approve to hire Barbara Brettz, Rockport Elementary School, special education teachers aide, effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Melissa will motion, a second?
I'll second.
George will second, any discussion?
Was this in addition to our board package, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I got.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have the informational items that were reports to the board that included the technology report, the maintenance report, and the transportation report. And then statements and concerns of the board.
The only statement or concern that I have, I would just like to get an update on how the school, the classes are going for at all four buildings since school has started. Because I know that we were short-staffed and you notified us here a couple of weeks ago or last week that we're completely fully staffed now, so-
That, that's, that is a moving target. As you can tell by all the, the personnel items that we have this evening, but from a certified standpoint, they're now fully staffed. With the addition of the maintenance and mechanic, all the major positions are filled. We're, we still, we saw tonight, we moved Cook into an aides position, so that just creates kind of domino effect, so we, we still have some open positions. We still are looking for additional school bus drivers. Got a little raise today, so hopefully that will incentivize some people to do that because we are, we are razor-thin on bus drivers, we just really are. But I'd be happy to prepare a report for the full board as to where we stand in October. Be almost three months in, which is just hard to believe, but-
Can we also get an update on class sizes and enrollment?
Absolutely, we actually have the ADN count day coming up this Friday.
So like after that?
Yes.
Piggybacking on what they said, under the administrative recommendations, I'd like to recommend that the school, the school board and superintendent's office get together and develop a more streamlined way of putting these hires together where we don't have people being placed in positions before approved by the board, unless that's the agreement of the board as a whole. I think we need to evaluate the policy there in terms of, I'm okay with it, but I think we can streamline this rather than reading these off and having people that have started and then have been terminated before it actually makes it to the board. So I would encourage that we as a board and Mr. Snyder get together and figure out a plan to make that better. You know, I've talked to other corporations in regards to posting what those positions are and putting them on the, the door of the room when people come in and make it where you can, if there's a one, if there's one that you want to discuss or you want to exempt or have full discussion on, but to sit here and read these individually like this isn't, isn't a lot of time wasted for the people in the community and the people in this room.
We talked about that before the meeting, actually, and so we were looking at doing that for, sorry, for the next board meeting. So I'll send an email out to everyone, see what the options are, and then we can go from there.
That would be welcome.
Any other discussion or comments from the board? All right, so the next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. in the multipurpose room at South Spencer High School. That is a week later than our normal second Monday, so just make sure you make that change, it's due to fall break. And time to adjourn, seven oh two, can I get a motion?
A motion.
George will motion, a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Chris will, sorry, okay. Chris will second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
I couldn't come on the twenty- Do you have? Do you have any, I'm trying to find out for the attorney, Matt? Okay, the attorney, I couldn't come on the twenty-ninth, so, I can't remember her name, but what firm is it now? I'm trying to grab one.
You asked the wrong person.